State, please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we will, we have no delegations signed up to speak, so we'll move right along to 2.2, the general summative assessment results for the 24-25 school year. I believe Ms. Kelly Watts.
Okay, good afternoon, President Polly, Superintendent Hardisty, Ms. Hornbuckle Myers, and board members. I had just passed out to you both in math and ELA as I had sent it to you. And this is trend data that we collect over the, every year, based on the general summative assessment, which is given to grades three through eight in ELA math. And they have started adding science, but ELA and math is what we are measured against. So if you want to start with mathematics, I believe it's on top. So on page one, what you have is the trend data that we have collected through the years, going back to 2018-19, which is the pre-COVID year. And as you can tell, we have progressively moved in the right directions. And compared to last year, we are up 2.07. That's overall as a county. Compared to state results, math for 24-25 is 38%. So we're, we are well above state levels as well. So the next page is a breakdown of every school and their trend data over the year, and whether they had an overall improvement or loss. I will tell you, one of the big things that we look at at the county level is we want to make sure that each grade level is progressing and moving through the benchmarks of improvement. So we, as you know, we have had interventionists in place over the last couple of years at the elementary. And this year, we've been able to put the second and third grade interventionists, as well as the ECATs into first grade that solely focus on math and reading. Also, over the last couple of years, we have what we call MTSS. We've presented, which is our intervention blocks that schools have to work. And so what we charge the schools with is that they drill down in their data, which they have data that drills down into every domain of reading and every domain of mathematics. And they can even pull student individual data to see where their gaps are. We also align it with our iReady data. As you know, right now, we're in the testing phase of our first benchmark. And sometimes, you know, the first benchmark, we even have them go back and look at the end of the year benchmark, because we don't want that summer slide to be greater than what would be expected. So our schools do work in their PLCs, which is professional learning communities, where they have data meetings. And then we will start with the executive directors, as well as myself, have those conversations with the school concerning their data. So you can go through, you can see each of the schools. The next page continues all the elementary. Then page, you'll see the middle school. And you can see, we have a lot more green than we do red. We are very excited to see the growth of some of our low-performing schools. As we will say, we are not where we always want to be, but we are at least moving in the right direction. If you'll go on to the next section, which is the SAT for Huntington High and Cabell Midland, you can see the progression of data based on, the SAT is only given to 11th graders. And we're starting that trend to move back up to where we were. We've exceeded pre-COVID numbers at Huntington High, and we are back at COVID levels with Cabell Midland now. So we're very pleased with the movement that, that the schools are making. Now, the schools, the high schools have their data as far as working in their PLCs, but they also have COT Academy that they work through that is aligned to the SAT. So our ninth graders and 10th graders take the PSAT. So we start getting data from that so teachers can work with the students to help refine those gaps and close those gaps. So you've pulled something up.
Mr. Jackson, I believe what she's going through now, is this the assessment overview that would be from the board meeting minutes?
Yes.
Or the agenda?
Yes.
Thank you.
Now, the second page is reading. And I will compare, as you see, our 24-25 reading at 53.1% proficient. This year, we have overall, compared to state, was down to 48. Forty-eight was, 48, we are 53. I'm like backwards here. So it's our reading, we continue to move in the right direction. I will tell you, I had to handwrite 18-19. You have 18-19, the pre-COVID year, on your school sheets, but you didn't have it, and I just now caught that when I was reviewing everything one last time. Questions?
I like it. An exploration of what Guy and Dot, fifth grade teachers did compared.
Yes. So fifth grade has, they've been working with model schools. They have Leah that has been working with them on instructional strategies. They do thinking maps, they also do building thinking classrooms. I have been in the fifth grade. Those, those teachers have attended the model school conference before. And Mr. Hardisty and I were just actually having that conversation as far as having that conversation of really focusing on the standards and where their kids' gaps are, and ensuring that mastery is being met. So the PLCs at Guy and Dot in general, they focus on that, that data, they compare it with their iReady data. And I don't know if Ms. Giles has any additional things, but yes, but.
I would also add that last year, we saw a significant change in maybe a direction. I know Ms. Holly has been there, this is year three, I believe. And utilizing the PLCs and, and working through standards and targeting those. The instruction in the classroom was just really, really strong.
Strong.
As well. And that, and that's what makes the difference, focusing on, on students, their needs, and making sure we're teaching standards. And that's, that's a great evidence of that, the growth that Guy and Dot had. And, and I know Ms. Holly's continuing that work within the other classes, and they're working towards the same goal as well. So that's something that we are anticipating moving forward with throughout that building. And it's really good to see those teachers working like they are. They are certainly committed to helping kids.
And we saw that in previous years with Central City, making that type of gains, where they're so focused on the standards and the achievement gaps. And they do a walk to intervention that solely targets those kids. And very impressive, as we've watched them grow through that process as well. So our other schools have visited the schools to see what they're doing, to make sure that they're properly aligning their standards with the day-to-day instruction, but also understanding where those gaps are. You can't move kids if they have foundational problems.
Right.
And so just.
That's one of the reasons we focused last year, at the end of the year. We had the extra PD days, and we were focusing on the grade level standards. And that's one of the, it's one of our goals to support teachers this year, is as they know their standards, give them the tools they need to make sure they can teach their kids the standards that they need. They know their kids, they know where they're at. We do benchmark assessments, we do a lot of assessments, trying to make sure that we find those gaps and put the right resources in their hands to allow them to teach the kids. Because that's where our, our instruction and our achievement grows, is when our teachers have the impact with our kids.
Absolutely.
There's a lot of programs out there, we have a lot of programs. Programs don't help kids, teachers help kids.
So you have to add, you have to be able to identify those gaps. And I feel like we're doing, I feel like we're starting to hit that even harder every year. And we do have, you know, like letters, we've, we learned from just beginning reading where the gaps were. And, you know, you have a system, a program, but our teachers are teaching it. It's something that they are teaching to build those foundational skills for reading that improves the comprehension, that improves the informational text. Kristen, do you want to?
Well, I would like to just add one thing, if you, I'm sorry, Kristen. If you'll look at, and I know we have reading in front of us. If you'll look at, for Guy and Dot, for example, if you will look at their scores, one of the great ways to see a growth indicator is look at those fifth grade scores, but look where they were the previous year as a fourth grader. Because then you're talking about the same kids from year to year and the growth that they see.
So that's one of the things that stood out to me along those same lines, except for in a negative way. There were some that had significant drops from third grade to fourth grade, fourth grade to fifth grade. And I mean, pretty significant drop. So I'm sure we've probably thought about that and tried to figure out.
And we can actually drill down to the actual classroom. And you can see, okay, you can ask, was that a brand-new teacher? Was that a certified teacher? Was that, what teacher was in place? Was there, sometimes, okay, a teacher may be on leave for an extended time. And what, you know, what impacted that classroom?
Right. So our goal is to minimize those impacts.
Yes.
In a negative way, and make sure we give them the resources they need to, to address the weaknesses kids have, while also making sure that we're teaching the grade-level content of where they're at now. And so that's, that's so key, is that core instruction in the classroom, and our staff is really, really strong in that, to make sure that we're presenting the core instruction daily. Even though they miss something, that's where the intervention takes place. That's where the Title I resources come in, to make sure we address those needs while we're still giving them grade-level content.
I was in a classroom the other day, a Title I school, and it was funny, because the lesson plan book, I wanted to go see how the teachers were using it. And I, the classroom I went into, as soon as I walked in, the teacher, "Oh, no, I don't have my standards on the board, but here." You know, I mean, just that, you know, and I said, that's, I'm not here about that. I just wanted to see how you're using your lesson plan book. She had her whole week, her mother had just passed away too, and I think she had, you know, she had reason to be a little dis, you know, organized on Monday morning, and I show up. But she knew her standards, she was teaching her standards, and that's what we want to see. We don't want to see it on the board, we want to see it in action.
The engagement in the classroom is what's key. And, and we're really not, when we go visit classrooms, we're not there to try to catch somebody doing something wrong. It's to make sure that we support our staff in the engaging curriculum that they have with their students, and making sure our students are engaged. That's where the instruction takes place.
And I remember visiting Guy and Dot, maybe two years ago.
Yes.
Maybe longer, maybe three. But that was what they were focusing on at the time, was student engagement.
Yes.
So, I mean, that is a very key.
And Ms. Giles, I apologize.
I have nothing left.
Okay.
Well, I don't know, too, if, if, you know, middle school, we, if Mr. Mann, you know, and then Ms. Scarborough as well, can say, the hard work that they've been doing to have those conversations with their administrators, to look where some of the areas that we need to focus a little more intently on, and make sure that we're providing the right support. Our academic specialists, I cannot say enough, as far as they are able, when we see those dips, that we have people that are content specialists and pedagogy specialists that can go in and help correct some of the mistakes that we, we do see. And they're, they're very talented, and we're very gifted on having those positions. And it's part of, Beth started, well, she started as a teacher, but she was an academic specialist for us for a few years too, so. And several we lose to principalship, but they're always good instructional leaders, so. So if you want to go ahead and take a look at the math now, to see if you have any questions? Oh, I did math first, okay, reading. You, you jumped to reading. Yes. So. Our current diagnostic window closes next week, so we'll start having that data as well. But I think it's been a good start going into classrooms and seeing the teachers' teaching and, and the engagement of kids. And seems like even having Explorer here with us, you know, this last week, just seeing the excitement of, of the students and their eagerness to learn is always so refreshing. And the school visits are definitely showing that. So it's like always, you know, coming out of COVID, every year, we see a little more like, okay, we're back to real school now. And we're there, we were there last year, but it was especially nice to have little ones in our building. So it's the best part of my day. So I tell teachers, I said, I don't come to, I come, that's, that's a teacher fix. So, any other questions?
As you're reviewing those, those assessment results, it's really good to look at our individual schools. You'll see some that were just stellar in, in some areas. And, and I think, and I truly expect that to increase. But I also want to just take a moment and congratulate our two high schools, excuse me, that gave the SAT. We, we test a lot of students in high school. And so to have growth in both schools and both content areas, when sometimes it's a challenge to motivate high school students in the right areas, our, our staff and our administrators have really put a focus on that. And a couple of those scores, and I don't know if you've had a chance to look at those, but a couple of those scores really stand out. For example, Cabell Midland had a 14-point increase in reading, which is, which is a huge increase from year to year. But, but it's not to minimize Huntington High School, they showed growth in both as well. So I just wanted to just take a moment and thank everyone for their work last year. Sure, we're not happy with where we're at, we're certainly glad we're showing an increase. But I don't think Ms. Watts and myself or the team, or most of our administrators and teachers, would be happy until we're at 100%, because that's what our goal would be. And, you know, showing a growth year after year is, is something that we're trying to sustain and move in the right direction.
Well, and one thing, a special note on our high schools, that we struggled from when I first started here nine years ago, was the attendance percentage. And both high schools had 95, over 95% attendance rate to take the SAT. And that's huge, because that has been a struggle in the past, to where our counselors and principals would go try to get kids to come in so we at least meet the state requirement. And if you look on past scorecards, sometimes we were dinged on that. So that says a lot, that all of our kids were tested at the high school level.
Right, and it's also a testament to the work they're doing, getting our students to school every day.
Yes.
Not just SAT, it's every day, our, our, our attendance rate is improving, and that, that's great to see. Kids are at school and kids are engaged.
Yes.
Good to see.
So Ms. Scarborough, do you have anything else you want to add? Oh, she's good, too. Mr. Ma, or Mann, do you want, Mr. Ma, I did Miles and Giles together. We couldn't do it, this is a team effort, this is, and having a great leader with Mr. Hardisty is always refreshing to help us keep our focus on the prize, is what I say. So that's all I have, if you don't have any other questions. We'll be updating you on the diagnostics after, I believe, Benchmark II, as we normally do, so.
Thank you. Moving on to 2.3, discussion on HB 2499.
So I'm turning it over to Ms. Stevens now.
Hello, President Polly, board members, Mr. Hardisty and Ms. Hornbuckle Myers left us for right now. But House Bill 2499 became effective on July 1st of 2025. And it was a bill that has been put in place to train principals, appropriate central office personnel, course board members, and others on the Individual Education Disability Act and the federal regulations of the West Virginia State Board Policy 2419, which is what I call our Bible here in West Virginia, that we look at for students with disabilities. In that training, it stated that we have to have all training in the county completed by December 31st of 2025. Now, how the training can be rolled out is in different ways. One is, we kind of touched on a little bit of it at the administrators summit that we had at the end of July, where we provided them with the teacher's rights and presentation for them to give to their teachers in their building, because that had to be done in person with the staff. So they had that PowerPoint presentation, and part of that is in this packet here that you've got today, that will show what they were presenting to them. And then they were to sign off that they had that. The other is, we are going to do a presentation to administrators in October to go over the points of House Bill 2499 that we have to do with them. And then I'm going to present you all this evening with an overview of House Bill 2499. And then if you all have questions, you can ask them this evening, or if you want to review all the material, and then you have questions. I put my card there in your blue folder, so you can reach out, email me, call me, whatever, okay? As far as that goes. Also, training, from what I understand, will be presented to any of the board members that go to the Fall Conference for board members. And another way that the Department of Ed said that we can roll out House Bill 2499 is through the support teams that are being developed through what they're calling Strive Teams in each of the counties. And we have began to develop our Strive Teams here in Cabell County. In the spring, we sent two elementary schools to be Strive-trained. And they, those teams, again, like I said, are support teams for students that are having difficulty, whether it's academically, socially, emotionally, or behavior, and trying to put steps in for those kids, whether they are kids that are identified special ed, or they are general education students. This fall, we will be sending two secondary teams for Strive-training. So I think we're going to send Cabell Midland, but I have not discussed with Mr. Mann yet which middle school that he would like to have go to that training. What we asked the administrators in July was that they go back and they look at developing a Strive Team in each of their buildings. That consisted of an administrator, consisted of a general ed teacher, consists of a special education teacher, would also consist of it if they had a behavioral interventionist in their building, social workers in their building, counselors in their building, any of that support staff. So that those teams are already established in each of our buildings to provide support to students who need more than just an individual teacher working with them. So anyways, all of that said, again, like I said, we'll go through what House Bill 2499 is and give you all an overview of it this evening, okay? So if you look at the, when you, if you've got this packet in front of you, if you'll turn to your first page there. The purpose of IDEA is to ensure free, appropriate public education, or what we call FAP, to students with disabilities. It emphasizes equity, accountability, and excellence in special education. And it covers children from birth through age 21 under Parts B and C of IDEA. And if you'll look, Part B focuses on the Free Appropriate Public Education, or FAP, for children with disabilities in the school setting. So those age ranges are 3 to 21 for students in the school setting. The key components of this is the IEPs that we develop for students with disabilities, the related services that are on a student's IEP. And we also look at the least restrictive environment, which is referred to as the LRE for students. We always try to keep students in their least restrictive placement when we are developing what a student's actual needs are through that IEP. Because we have found that the more that they are with their non-disabled peers, it, it's better for the student's overall growth. So we try to keep them, like I said, in that least restrictive environment. And it also has parent and student participation, which we always encourage student or parent involvement with their students' IEPs and their annual development of those, or anything that we need to meet on throughout the year for those students. And then Part C focuses, it provides the Early Intervention Services to infants and toddlers with disabilities and for their families. So that's our birth-through-age-two students, is what Part C encompasses. So the key differences is Part B focuses on the school environment, while Part C focuses on the early intervention services for students. Then if you look down at the bottom of the page three, which would be the federal and state responsibilities, it talks about the 34 Code of Federal Regulations, Part 300. And that Part 300 of the Code of the Federal Regulations, it outlines the federal regulations for assisting states in educating children with disabilities as mandated by IDEA. And this part of the code details the requirements for states and local educational agencies, which we refer to as our LEA, in providing special education and related services to eligible students. So this part of the federal and state responsibilities requires states to monitor our LEA for compliance, mandate systems of general supervision and programmatic monitoring. And West Virginia's Department of Ed Responsibility, they implement a tiered monitoring system. We went through this, this, this cyclical monitoring, which happens every four years, okay? We went through this last school year. And on top of that monitoring, we also had that independent audit that came through. So we were provided, you know, good information from both of those. And it is a, this cyclical monitoring that happens from the State Department. It is a risk-based and focused review. So they look at what's called our Annual Desk Audit, or our ADA, monitoring. And those indicators help us develop plans of how we need to move forward for improvement. One of the plans that we have to do yearly is what we call our targeted systemic improvement plan. And that is based off of our Annual Desk Audit. The last two years, we have looked at our preschool indicators and how we could improve our preschool indicators, and we have improved them significantly from where we were two years ago with those indicators. So this year, because we did not meet our, our LREs, or our least restrictive environment indicators, we are focusing on that as part of our TSIP plan as we move forward for this year. as we move forward for this year. So Policy 2419, that, again, as I stated, that's kind of our Bible here for West Virginia. We look at...
Can I interrupt for a second?
Yes.
Because I've got a couple of questions, and I will forget what they are if I don't ask now. So I want to go back first to when you said we sent two teams in the elementary school for training, for that Strife. Is that what it was called, the Strife Training? So was it determined that that, how was it determined those schools were picked? And was it to train them just for the value of those two schools? Or are they going to train other elementary schools?
The train, they are, as they were trained, they are supposed to go out and train other elementary schools once we get our teams really established and move forward. Now, we have had Jennifer Carpenter in here twice. One was at the Administrator Summit to talk about behavior and interventions for behavior. And then she came August 7th and worked with all of these Strive Teams that were developed by the schools themselves and worked with them on Strive and how to move forward with that. So it is, like I said, it's something new that is being developed by the West Virginia Department of Ed. And as more of that training happens, they, the role of that team that is trained in an all-day training is to go out and support the other teams that have been developed through professional development.
So it started with a, as she said, two teams in the county. So we, she and her team helped develop a team at those two schools. It's, it's new this year that we have the Strive Team at every school. And those teams are going to be the ones to help train those other teams. So that, I think that, if that makes any sense at all, when they rolled it out, they wanted to roll it out to a small group to make sure it was something meaningful. And it was, it was an all-day training. It was two days, wasn't it?
It was two days at that point, but the Fall one is only one day for the secondary teams. And in developing those teams, to go back and answer that question, or what schools that we chose, we looked at Central City because that is where we have in place some of our behavioral students for support there. And then we spoke with Ms. Giles, and we looked at another school that may benefit from being a part of a Strive Team and having that intervention for two days. And Vob is another one of our large schools that encompasses a lot of students.
What'd you say?
Is one of our larger elementary schools.
Did you say Voe?
Voe, Village of Barbizville. That encompasses a lot of our students. So that is why we chose those two elementaries. And in looking at the high school, of course, you know, I talked with Heather in regards to that. And then Mr. Man, I'll talk with him in regards to what middle school to send.
So that, my second question was, you said that one of the things that came out of the evaluation was not putting kids in a least restrictive environment was a problem area.
Well, that's through our Annual Desk Audit that we received, which all of our indicators are on there that goes through whether it's reading and math development, dropout prevention, you know, our dropout rate, our graduation rate. Then it goes down to our least restrictive environments with students in all grade levels. And it encompasses discipline. Our indicators kind of follow along with the county scoreboard card that we have with that. So through that, like I said, our LREs were out.
So I wondered if, I, I think I remember Tim saying that we were over, over-qualifying people. I don't know if I'm using the right terminology there.
Over-identifying.
Over-identifying people. That where that came in, like, or no?
Well, Policy 2419 changed several years ago. And when we looked at Policy 2419 several years ago, there was a discrepancy that you had to have in order to qualify. Now, to qualify through Child Find is that you're not making meaningful progress.
Discrepancy between your IQ and your achievement level.
Yes, yes, yes. And now it is that, when you meet through your SAT teams, it is looking at whether or not the student is making meaningful progress from the first SAT meeting to the second SAT meeting to the third SAT meeting, and then looking at whether or not a student should be referred for special education. I think that that change in itself has made a larger number of students qualify for special education because of the lack of meaningful progress that they're making, which has increased, again, like I said, the number of students who are qualifying.
And maybe that's not a lack, maybe it's not a learning disability. Maybe there are other factors that are affecting that ability to achieve.
Yes. So.
It could be that because of the way it's, it's worded now, a student that's, a transient student that may move along, that has gaps in their education, could find themselves referred and identified now. And it's, and I, and I don't think it's...
And it's the testing you're saying.
Yeah, I don't think it's an intentional thing by anyone that's doing it. I think, I think there are factors that, that are not considered because of the way it's worded now and the way we identify them. So, and, and I think as far as the least restrictive environment, that's something that I have to give huge, well, all of this. The amazing job that Ms. Stevens and her team does, it is a daunting task, to be sure. But to make sure that we are, are trying to get our students in that least restrictive environment is a challenge because it's, it's literally her and three supervisors that she has that is monitoring over 3,000 kids regularly. And so they do have some assistance on some people that work with them, but to make sure that we're meeting the needs of the kids in the best place possible. And, and again, it was a desk audit. And the desk audit is not actually out there in the classrooms. It's a desk audit, and it identified that as something we need to look for. So I thank her for her work on it and on all of this, but it's, I thank you for that.
And like I said, we are looking through our Targeted Systemic Improvement Plan on ways that we can improve those LRE indicators. And we'll work towards that. So hopefully, we'll show improvement when we get those results in April of this coming school year.
Thank you.
I'd like to strive for just a second. Is that a replacement for the SAT process or an additional layer?
I think it's just, you're saying with the Strive Team, it's, it's another way of support. It's not doing away with SAT. It's just another way of support to provide for students who need it.
If I'm not mistaken, Strive is an acronym that, from the Department of Ed, to try to help districts to understand the support and opportunity that they have available and to help train us and our staffs on what we can do to better serve the needs of the kids. And it's, it's more of an initiative that the department has. It doesn't replace SAT at all.
And Strive stands for Strengthen Behavior Response Through Targeted Assistance to Promote Regular Attendance, Increased Achievement, Validated Practices, and Empowered Support Teams. So it's a lot to memorize. So anyways, that's what Strive stands for. And like I said, it is new. And as we navigate through this, hopefully, that they, those teams can provide the support for the students in Campbell County. So if you look at Policy 2419 highlights, this Policy 2419 does align with IDEA. It governs ability or eligibility, IEPs, LREs, caseloads, and related services. And it applies to preschool through adult learners with exceptionalities. And then, I know we've touched on the LRE already, but if you look at the least restrictive environment, that's for students with disabilities, where we must educate them with their non-disabled peers to the maximum extent possible. And removal from the general education setting is only allowed when a student's needs cannot be met in that general education setting, even with supplementary aids and services put in place for those students. And then if you'll go over to the next page, we'll look at placement options ages 6 through 21 in kindergarteners. This is part of identifying whether or not we look at students as a general ed full-time student, a general ed part-time student, a special education that's receiving less than 40% in the gen ed setting, or a special ed student with a special school, separate school day. So we look at that by the number of special education classes that a student is receiving or related services that a student is receiving. And our LREs are based off those types of services that were given these students. So we want, again, to keep them with their non-disabled peers as much as possible. So I wanted to kind of show you there of how, on an IEP, those students are marked depending on how much of their day that they're spending with their non-disabled peers. If you look at the key LRE takeaways for educators and parents, LRE is not a place. It is a principle that's focused on inclusion and individualized support. The IEP team plays a central role in determining the most appropriate setting based on the student's unique needs, not on available resources or disability category. The general education settings are always the starting point for placement decisions. Okay? Documentation and transparency in the IEP are essential, especially regarding the time spent in different settings and participation in activities. And then a continuum of placement options ensures flexibility to meet the diverse needs of our students from full inclusion to specialized schools. The next page talks about student discipline procedures. Yes, ma'am?
On your least restricted environment, it says students with disabilities must be educated with their non-disabled peers to maximum extent appropriate. How much time does that mean that they have to mingle with their non-disabled peers?
It depends on the student's exceptionality and what their needs are. Again, we try to keep them with their non-disabled peers as much as possible, even those that may be self-contained for all of their core subjects. We most definitely want them going out for their lunch, for any types of breaks that they have, or related arts classes, or their elective-type classes. So we want them to be as much as possible with their non-disabled peers. But again, it is based on that student's needs and what their capabilities are. The IEP team determines that. And that IEP team consists of your administrator or administrator can put a designee in place for them. You're, it involves a general education teacher. It involves a special education teacher. And it can involve a counselor or anyone else who may have knowledge of, that needs to be expressed in that IEP committee's determination of how they move forward.
I just think it's important that they do mix with their...
Absolutely.
I think, I think that's good.
Yes.
I just didn't know who determined how long it was. And I guess, like you said, it depends on the student and the IEP committee.
Mm-hmm. And what their disability is. Yes, as to what that team decides is what is appropriate for that student. Okay? If you look at student discipline procedures, students with disabilities, we always look at them as general education students first, okay? And administrators need to be familiar with students that they have in their buildings, especially those that have behavior intervention plans. Because a lot of times, those behavior intervention plans will have steps that are put in place for these students before they look for removal out of the school environment for that student. Behavior intervention plans direct how to address those individual behaviors. If you look, I have included the DAR forms in your packet. These DAR forms are used for students when they reach, well, that, we fill them out for any suspension that a student has. But when they reach Day 11 of out-of-school suspension, okay? They have to have what we call a manifestation meeting to provide rights to that student. And the two things that we look at is whether or not the incident that occurred, does it have a direct or substantial relationship to their disability? Or was it a failure to implement, whether it's their IEP or whether it's their 504 plan? Because students with 504s are encompassed, are encompassed under that protection rights to have what we call the manifestation meeting prior to looking at putting them up for expulsion or anything beyond Day 11 of out-of-school suspension. So I included what the DAR forms look like. I'm sure you've probably seen these with packets that you've received in the past for students maybe up for expulsion or whatever. But I wanted you to have those and know that that's part of this House Bill 2499 as well, okay? So if you'll look down at parental rights and advocacy, we look at parents shall be made aware of their rights to obtain an educational rights advocate. Procedural safeguards provided to all parent or guardians regarding due process rights and all safeguards for students and families. Part of what House Bill 2499 indicated that now, prior to the annual development of an IEP, or if you're doing what we call a targeted review, because a targeted review requires a team to come together to do that as well, okay? Part of that now is that parents have to have a verbal explanation of IEP meetings. So you have this sheet in your folder. The West Virginia Department of Ed developed this explanation sheet and worked with Bowles &amp; Rice to make sure that they were aligning with what Policy 2499 asked of them. So they rolled this out to the counties. This is the sheet that, prior to an IEP meeting or a targeted review, is to be given verbally to parents explaining the identification process of child find, parents and guardians' due process rights, teachers' protections and procedural rights, and what teachers may request and receive. And part of that I'll go through here towards the end of the packet that's on this page. And what teachers must do as part of their role is either be in the case manager or the general education teacher for that student. And then local advocacy centers and points of contact. Now, we did put together briefly some advocacy agencies that are out there that was put in the PowerPoint presentation for the administrators to use during their information that they were rolling out as far as teachers' rights and advocacy. But the West Virginia Department of Ed is also going to develop all of the agencies for the state of West Virginia that people are, parents or guardians or students if they're 18 years of age who advocate for themselves at that point, can use and look for if they need to have an advocate help represent them. So we are waiting on that document, but once we receive that document, we will have that as well to present to parents and to teachers. So if you look at the next page, this talks about operational guidelines. This is our maximum class size that we have to go through or follow with Policy 2419, which guides the staffing that we need in our special education classrooms or our general ed classrooms when we involve ratios of students. general ed classrooms when we involve ratios of students that are in those classrooms. So, when we look at this, we look at the Level 1 service needs, and that's the minimal support that we are providing for students on an IEP. So, if we look at the early learning programs in our grades kindergarten through second, they can have 12 students with a minimum staffing ratio of one adult per six students. If you look at middle school, or let me go through grades three through five, they can have 12 students with a minimum staffing ratio of one adult per eight students. In middle school, they can have 12 students per adult. High school, they can have 12 students per adult. This chart here that you have provides the maximum class size for the instructional periods by programmatic level and the level of service needs for students with disabilities as they are determined and documented by the special education administrator or designee. And that's per Policy 2419, that statement is. If you look at the Level 2 service needs, now, this is students who need more support. They may be in the special education environment, maybe four periods out of their day, okay? And the Level 2 service needs are 12 students in the elementary setting with a minimum staffing ratio of one adult per six students. And then, the middle school has 12 students with a minimum staffing ratio of one adult to six, and the same for the high school setting. And, again, our Level 1 service needs are kindergarten to second grade, one to six. Grades three through five, one to eight. And, at least one special education teacher is required to provide instruction. And then, if you have K through seven, or K through second, there's seven to 12 students. And three through five, nine to 12 students, you have to have at least one special education teacher, and another qualified adult is required to be able to provide instruction in that setting. If you'll turn over to the next page, you have the Level 3 service needs. And the Level 3 service needs are our most intensive support that we provide students in special education. You have your early learning programs, grades K through five, that's eight students with a minimum staffing ratio of one adult per four students. In middle school, you have eight students with a minimum staffing ratio of one adult per four students. And then, in the secondary high school level, you have eight students with a minimum staffing ratio of one to four. So, when we look at the beginning of the school year, our administrators are monitoring what's going on in their building, and they're looking at, not only their general ed classrooms, but they're also looking at how many students are in their special education classroom, and what level of support that these students need. So, when they don't match up with the staffing needs or the ratios that are provided, that's when the request for personnel comes into my office, or it will go to one of the executive directors. We sit down and we look at the entire special ed schedule for that building, and are those staffing requests necessary, or can we shift around some and meet the needs of our students, but also meet the needs of Policy 2419? So, it's, you know, the beginning of the year's kind of hectic, but we settle down as we move forward with what we need. And a lot of that is because of students who qualify at the beginning of the school year, or students that we move in from either different counties or out of state, who have qualified for special education services that may skew these differently than what we had predicted on our staffing needs the previous year. So, do you all have any questions regarding the ratios and staffing needs?
Well, I think this is going to be covered later, but I'm just going to throw this question out there. Is there, a couple of questions. One, is more funding given to our county when a child is on a Level 3 of service needs? No, same, same, I'm out.
Same.
And if a child is going to a charter school, do these rules apply?
Hmm, I'm not, I don't think that they do, no.
So, our state legislature decided that we needed to be trained so that we're following all these laws, but if you're applying for a HOPE scholarship, ignore it, and here's a cash. Is that essentially what we're talking about?
I will verify that, but it's my understanding that that's accurate.
If we are looking at, if you flip your page, and we're looking at the maximum number of students per classroom for pre-K to kindergarten...
Ms. Stevens, I feel like I have to just add to that just a little bit.
Okay.
And I don't want to go off on a tangent or anything, but I think it's also important to note, and I hope the public sees, we take every student. We take every student regardless of their background, their ability, what their needs are, and we meet those needs. And not all schools do that. All public schools do that, but not all schools do that. And I know that there's a push in the public to compare us to, whether it be a private or a charter, or whatever. They don't. They don't have to. And we do it for a couple of reasons, but one of them is just the right thing to do is to make sure that we take care of our students.
Yeah, that was going to be my point, was probably students who fall within these guidelines wouldn't even be allowed to go to a charter school, sadly enough.
If you look at the universal preschool to kindergarten with students with IEPs, those classrooms can include at least 50% of students without disabilities. So, if you're looking at your maximum students per classroom, a universal pre-K classroom can have 20 students with a limit of 10 students with IEPs. If you're looking at staffing for that classroom, there has to be two staff per classroom, which is one teacher and one additional staff person with no more than eight students with IEPs. And then, if you're looking at three staff per classroom, it has to be one teacher at least, and two additional staff required for 10 students in that classroom that has IEPs. So, you know, there are more staff than even what our school-age classrooms are in a lot of instances. Special pre-K, or special education pre-K classrooms, that includes less than 50% of students without disabilities. The maximum that they can have with eight students, the staff has to be one teacher and one additional staff. And if they have nine to 10 students, again, it's one teacher and one additional staff. So, when we are looking at classrooms that are delivering gifted services, they can have up to 15 students in that classroom environment. If we are looking at classrooms that are co-taught, it's where we have one general education teacher in that classroom, and then we have a special education teacher in that classroom, they can have up to 50%. So, be half general education students with, the other half would be students with IEPs. They cannot go over that 50% threshold of a ratio. If we're looking at classrooms that do not have co-taught, but they are core-taught classrooms, those classrooms, if they have a student with an IEP, and that IEP pertains to that academic core subject, where their accommodations are written, or their supplementary services are written for that class, they cannot exceed a ratio of more than 30% of the students in that classroom with IEPs. So, if we are looking at what we call case managers, who are special ed teachers out there, or our service providers out there, if you are looking at that, teachers of students with developmentally delayed pre-K through kindergarten, they cannot have any more than 20 students with IEPs. If we are looking at teachers of gifted, or exceptionally gifted, but now we've done away with the exceptionally gifted qualifications, so, we do gifted up to eighth grade, and then, if there are other needs that they need beyond eighth grade, we do what we call a reevaluation with that student and see if they qualify under one of our other exceptionalities before they move on to high school. Because in the high school, they are provided those honor classes and so forth there to provide for their giftedness. So, they can have up to 50 students on their caseload. Speech therapists can have up to 50 students on their caseload, whether that is students who receive speech only, or students who receive speech as part of a related service to their IEP. And then, teachers of all other exceptionalities, including developmentally delayed grades K through second, they can have 30 teachers on their case management list. And we try the best that we can to not maximize those lists, because it is a lot for a teacher to monitor throughout that year of that number of students. But, some cases, especially speech, they are looking at caseloads up to 50. Most of our school-age students with IEPs, they're looking around 20 to 25 in a max of a caseload of students. So, do you all have any questions regarding that? Okay. The other part is a breakdown of waiver requests. Waiver requests have to be submitted if we are looking at classroom sizes. Co-taught, more than 50%, and there's no way that we can adjust that after we review all schedules in that building, et cetera. We may have to apply for a waiver. But, with that waiver, we cannot have more than three students over that ratio in that classroom, okay? Extended waivers to the State Board of Education, again, those waivers have to be submitted by the Director of Special Education, and I think, once I submit that waiver, it goes to Mr. Hardesty. He has to approve that waiver, and then it's submitted forward, and then we wait for the decision of the West Virginia Department of Ed of whether or not they're going to grant that. We had to apply for a waiver last year for one of our elementary schools. That was over the 30% ratio in the class. We didn't have any more gen ed students to put in that grade level to kind of even out that ratio. So, we had to apply for that waiver in order to, you know, fix that issue there. So, again, we try to work it out before we ever have to go this route of applying for a waiver and asking for that. Then, the general education teachers' rights that we had to provide is, a general education classroom teacher is entitled to the following: When a student with exceptional needs is placed into an integrated classroom, and the student's individualized education program, their IEP, requires curriculum modifications, including delivery of instruction of services and accommodations to be provided by the regular classroom teacher. So, again, training had to be given to them in person. That was rolled out through the administrators of the building. They were told they had between the start of the school year till December 31 of how they wanted to roll that out. I think a lot of them did it during their professional development days there at the beginning, when students, or when teachers returned. And then, the teacher signed off, and then that documentation came into my office for us to keep his records that they were given this information. So, teachers are to be given a signed copy of the IEP of the student that is being placed into their regular classroom. There is also through WEVIS 2.0, they have a tab now that all teachers can see, and it's called Read IEP. So, if a student is placed in their classroom, they can go to that tab, they can read that student's IEP through that as well. If, we ask that if students are being placed in the gen ed classroom, that when they are scheduling an IEP meeting, that that would be the general education teacher that they invite to that meeting. Secondary, it may be more than one gen ed teacher to have in that meeting. And high school, if it's the area that, the weakness for that student, then we ask that they have that gen ed teacher be present as part of that IEP team committee. Therefore, they're helping to develop the supports that the student may need in their classroom. And that's also showing with their attendance there that they're agreeing to have that student, which is part of the teachers' rights and advocacy that they are to be given. If a student is not showing progress after they have been placed in the general ed classroom, that teacher has the right to ask for an IEP review. And as the case manager for that student, they would schedule that IEP review, and they would sit down and look at the data that is showing why that student is not making meaningful progress. And does that student need to be pulled into a more restrictive environment, such as a special ed? Or do they need to change some of the accommodations that are in place for that student on the IEP to help support them more in that gen ed setting?
You may have covered this, and maybe this is probably something I should know, but the case manager, who is that person?
That is the special education teacher that is within that building.
Oh, it is, okay.
Yes, that services students. And a lot of our buildings, we have more than one case manager because of the amount of students there that receive services. They are also, if they ask for assistance to help with understanding the student's exceptionality, or how to make accommodations for that student in the classroom, we are to provide that assistance to them. Now, that can be through the case manager in that building, that can be through the supervisors that I have within my department, that can be by some of the compliance specialists that we have within our department as well. Because our compliance specialists are scheduled out in our schools by the schools that they oversee and read IEPs for, they are in those buildings every other week to support those teachers. So, one way or the other, we can ensure that that is given to them. If they ask for advocates to come in, general ed teachers are not supposed to be penalized for asking for the support of an advocate to attend a meeting to help support the needs of that student. So, that's part of House Bill 2499 that we've provided to them. Also, in the past, up until last school year, this changed. Gen ed teachers had to keep what we called accommodation logs and mark when they were providing accommodations to students. They no longer have to keep those logs unless a parent requests for that teacher to keep a log for that student's accommodations. Otherwise, all they have to do at the end of each grading period is ensure that they have provided those accommodations for the student that's in their classroom.
Is a school's Title I status based entirely on the income of the families attending that school?
You want to answer that one?
Income levels?
It's actually on the amount of services a family receives. Generally, that's based on income, but it can be any services that they receive. And I hope that makes sense. It could be, but generally, income, and that's what was always before, they filled out forms to qualify. Now, it's through the services that they receive through the state.
Well, I would think since services are provided through IDEA for children from birth, that there could be services that are provided just based on a child's exceptionality, not the income.
You're talking about for the title?
For Title I. Maybe they could, maybe a school qualifies for Title, if it's based on services... If it's based on services.
Yeah.
And a family's getting benefit because they have a special ed.
Right.
A child that needs something from birth, then that could be services no matter what their income is.
Yeah, I probably used the wrong term on services. It's benefits that they might receive.
Okay.
Whether it's food stamps or a medical card.
Uh huh.
Those types, yeah.
Yes.
Okay. Gotcha.
Okay, and then that's special education teachers' responsibilities of all of this with the teachers' rights are the special education teacher is to ensure that if they are placing a student in the general education environment, that the teacher understands the student's exceptionality and what's required of them on the IEP. And then they also are the ones who monitor the student progress while they're out there in the gen ed classrooms, as well as their IEP goals that are on the IEPs for them. And then advocacy resources, as I explained earlier when we were at that point going through the overview, we provided them with some of advocacy's such as disability rights of West Virginia, legal aid, the West Virginia Parent Training and Information, and West Virginia Cares as some of the agencies that are here that they can reach out to. But the West Virginia Department of Ed is going to provide all the agencies that families can reach out to or teachers can reach out to in the state of West Virginia for us to provide as a document. So this, I hope, helps some with explaining House Bill 2499 and the requirements of it. Put it into kind of a little synopsis here for you, pulling in IDEA and pulling in Policy 2419 so that you have it to view this way instead of having to go and research it everywhere.
Thank you.
The other thing that you have that I wanted to show you as well is at the beginning of each IEP meeting, and annually, we are supposed to provide procedural safeguards to parents. This provides parents, guardians, or students of age 18 who advocate for themselves. This provides them all the information that they need to know regarding student rights, state complaints, due process complaints, et cetera. We provide it to them in this nice little booklet, which is the same as this, but I printed this offline and put this in your folders for you all to have. So again, if you have any questions after you review all this, because it's quite a bit of material there, feel free to reach out to me and we'll provide you with the answers that you need. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I think you all are personally, I commend you for the work you do. That, there's a lot. I didn't realize how much went into that. That, that's a lot. You all do great.
Appreciate that.
If there's a test, I hope we can use our notes.
Yes.
It's a lot.
All right, we'll move on to 2.4, which is superintendent goals for '25 and '26, a draft of those goals that we all have been given.
All right, thank you, President Polly, board members. Hard to believe it's that time of year already, but we are off and rolling. Just a little bit of background. Each year, the superintendent goals are supposed to be based on the strategic plan that the county develops. Of course, we couldn't use all of that plan. Ours is, I think, 40 pages long this year. Which really, everything that we do and all of the money that we spend, even through title schools, is all tied back to our strategic plan. That plan drives our focus for the year. And so that plan actually has three goals. Achievement and growth, student support, and model of continuous improvement. A lot of those are tied into the Goal One and Goal Two that I have here, or Three or Four, but I tried to break Three and Four out instead of just having Three that matched that because I think it's important to have financial resources as a goal and also communication. And so if, if you would humor me just a few minutes, I'd like to go through these on Goal One, achievement and growth. The goal would be improve academic proficiency and instructional reading and math levels at all programmatic levels, K through 12, demonstrating an increase at each grade level as documented on already benchmark assessments, PSAT, SAT, and GSA assessments. And the GSA is the General Summit of Assessment, which we went over today. In order to hit that goal, the strategies I've listed are visit classrooms across the district with administrators to ensure students receive rigorous instruction that's based on state standards, utilizing best instructional strategies. Strategy Two would be complete instructional diagnostic assessments at the beginning of the school year for all K through eight students in reading to identify the learning deficiencies. We're going to do that again, also in math, and I'm glad this is a draft. Strategy Three would be additional diagnostics in grades K through eight to measure student growth and identify additional areas of need. And that would be like a mid-year benchmark and then a spring benchmark. And I believe, I know Ms. Childs isn't here, but from time to time, we also do a fourth one in our elementary schools just to make sure the students are on track for that. Strategy Four, utilize math and reading interventions in second and third grade classrooms as allowed by West Virginia Code to increase math and reading achievement in third grade as measured by the GSA assessment. Strategy Five would be identify areas of professional development needed to ensure best practices are utilized as instructional practices. Strategy Six, ensure instruction, utilize multi-tiered instructional supports based on the needs of the students. And Seven is keep the Board of Education members in a public informed of progress through regular instructional updates at regularly scheduled Campbell County Board of Education meetings. I have measurements towards those established goals would be increased ELA and math performances on annual assessments and benchmark assessments, increase in proficiency scores on SAT and PSAT, instructional updates at regular board meetings. Maybe it's a good way to do this, since this is a draft and a discussion. Is, is there anything that the board sees that we need to, that you would like for me to look at differently as it promotes achievement and growth? There is another bullet point on page two of walkthrough data that we can utilize. One of the things, I just want to take a moment and thank Mr. Mann, Mr. Jackson, earlier this spring and during the summer. One of the things we've done in the past is we utilized a program to, for our walkthrough data. And while it's, it was a nice program and principals or administrators could go in and do a snapshot of the classroom. They finished, they hit send, it sends a copy of that to the teachers. One, two things there. One is I didn't really think it was giving us exactly what we needed. And two is I really didn't want to pay for a program that might be able to utilize on our own. And so I talked with them, they met the challenge. They created a walkthrough form that we use, that we're not paying for, that they created. And they actually have it linked to the West Virginia standards. So if they walk into a fifth grade classroom and it's math, they can actually click on the form and go to the state site for the standards and tell what standard's being taught while they're in the classroom. And so it also goes on the form. It keeps a running tab of those walkthroughs. And they've added a column in the Excel spreadsheet that they created for the administrator to make comments because really, the purpose of that is to reinforce positive instruction and assist where we might see something that would be a, something we need to talk to the teacher about as far as like what, maybe some strategies that might help improve what they were doing. And so with, with emailing that, everyone's busy. It's easy for that to get lost. The discussion afterwards is where the real change happens. And they now have a place to put notes in for that discussion, things that they want to talk about. And even have, after that instruction, they can go back in and modify that. So I greatly appreciate what they're doing there. We're able to go and look at those. And they've, they've, it's in 365, so they can give access to that so we can actually go in and look at it. And I greatly appreciate that, them meeting that challenge. Wasn't an easy task, but they made it look easy. So that's achievement and growth. Any comments or thoughts? Moving on, on Goal Two is student support. Develop and maintain a comprehensive system of wraparound services to strengthen student support and school safety that will foster a safe, inclusive, and emotionally supportive school culture. Additionally, the district will take necessary steps to ensure facilities are maintained appropriately and implement measures to ensure school safety is a priority throughout the district. Strategy One is use the developmental health plan to support students and staff through the Office of Health Wellness and Support. Strategy Two, psychologists and social workers work with students as determined by functional behavioral assessments. Strategy Three, CIS facilitators engage with community resources to align with family needs. Strategy Four, strengthen school-based attendance and engagement supports through professional development. Strategy Five, Campbell County Schools will utilize social workers, counselors, and school-based mental health services to address student and family's social emotional needs using community-based resources. Strategy Six, continue to monitor and develop PBIS programming within the schools. Seven, identify needs throughout the district and seek funding through the West Virginia School Building Authority where appropriate to leverage district dollars. Eight, you'd update a prioritized needs list for each school, including a long-term plan for updating and replacing items throughout the district such as roofs, HVAC units, doors, windows, fleet vehicles, and paving needs, which is part of the CEFP. Nine, work closely with school resource officers and all first responders throughout the county to prioritize student and staff safety. And Ten, review, revise, and update county policy throughout the year. Measurement towards those goals would be OSS, which is out-of-school suspensions, and chronic absenteeism, the data from those, regular district policy revisions, professional development sessions, applications for school building authority funds as needs are identified, and continuing implementation and update the long-term plan for upkeep and replacement of facility needs. Any thoughts or comments or changes or? All right, Goal Three, financial resources. Ensure the use of district funds is transparent and aligned to the school district needs. That's one of the reasons our meetings have been so long and our agendas have been so long, at least. Strategy One, ensure decisions are made to ensure financial stability or sustainability. Strategy Two, utilize board meetings and agendas to promote transparency. Three, share district financial information with the board and public at regular board meetings. Four, ensure staffing meets, ensure staffing meets the needs of the students, planned instructional programs, and financial resources. And Five is by June of 2026, deliver a budget that utilizes financial resources to support and enhance effective teaching and learning. The measurement towards those goals would be financial update of board meeting each month, completion of fiscal year '25 financial statement. This was a mistake in the early one, I caught this. It's the completion of FY '25 audit. The one on the website says '26. The way that works is our financial statement is due at the state at the end of September. The audit is due in March. And so that's for the last school year. So present a salary schedule for board approval. Present a balanced budget for board approval for FY '27, which we would do next spring, and align staffing to student and district needs during personnel season. And then Goal Four is communication. Facilitate a communication system on form. Listen to and update all members of the school community of procedures, policies, programs, and opportunities. Develop advisory councils with administrators and students, as well as meet with employee representatives. Strategy Two, continue to provide information about engagement opportunities, district priorities, and to celebrate student, employee, school, and district successes through board meetings and use of tools such as district and school websites, mobile app, mass notification system, establish social media platforms in schoology. Three, communicate and work closely with all regional entities to ensure opportunities are maximized for Campbell County Schools students and staff. Four, continue connections between Campbell County Schools and the community. Five, develop a marketing plan to highlight the successes of our students, staff, and schools to ensure parents understand the education available throughout Campbell County Schools. So our measurement towards meeting those will be social media, social media usage in a positive way for the school district, usage of district communication tools, advisory meeting notes and outcomes, attendance at various community meetings, and marketing plan and implementation. One of the things I would like to add, and I know that we haven't finished this work session yet, but I would really like the board to have a board work session at the first Monday, or the Monday before the first board meeting in October, which I believe would be the sixth, somewhere in there, it's the fifth or the sixth. And at that one, we will know more, our second month enrollment. We'll know, we'll be able to discuss how Hope Scholarship, homeschool, those things are impacting our district, where our finances anticipate for next year because it'll be based on that second month report. And one of the things that we have been working on, and Dr. Stevens has really put a lot, putting a lot of effort into this and has already, is how do we define more what we do as a district in a way that we can promote the district to our community to show them the great things that are going on every day in Campbell County Schools? And so those are things that I'd like to discuss at that meeting. But for right now, if there's any feedback or anything on our plans here, I'd love to entertain those. Or if you have some this week, feel free to reach out to me.
All right, thank you.
I want to interject something. Yes, I like that idea that you, and we, you and I, fuck that.
Yes.
I love the idea about marketing because so often, I think there's, okay. I have this perspective that when someone says, oh yes, my child goes to a private school, they think that's superior. And I want people to think in Campbell County that when their kids go to Campbell County Schools, that's superior.
Right.
I want that to be, that this is the go-to thought when they think about Campbell County Schools.
A great example of that is what we just celebrated at the last meeting with our AP scores. And we, we pay for that test for our students in those AP classrooms. So every student in an AP classroom takes that assessment and we still surpass the global rate on nearly all of them.
And there was a news story, and so one of the, one of the local media did a news story.
Yes, yes.
And that's good for us, that's good.
Yes. But thank you.
It's really good.
Yeah. So we'll go down to board member comments. I'll just say, it's, you know, the information that we have, were presented with throughout this session, I think highlights really, I mean, the expertise of the people that we have working with our students. I mean, from, you know, just some of the General Summit of Assessment results, the positive things that were highlighted in there, and the growth that we saw with, you know, some of our schools is just tremendous. And you, you don't do that without an expert in the classroom. To the information that was provided on HB 2499, just to the depth of understanding and the knowledge that goes into how we take care of our special education students. I mean, it's tremendous. And so I think, you know, just, this information this evening really highlights some of the, the expertise that we have in our accounting. And I'm just very thankful for it. Any other board member comments? If not, then we'll just have a motion for adjournment.
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, all in favor of adjournment, taking five by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, any opposed? None, we are adjourned at 5:03.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.